All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our roll call please.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Espinola?
Here.
Mr. Barhu?
Here. Okay, Mr. Lemay, is there anybody registered to speak for public appearance?
There was no one signed in, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. School Committee Communications. We'll go right past that. And the report of our student representative. Thank you and welcome.
The outing club had a great apple picking trip at Autumn Hills Orchard in Groton on October 2nd. They gave apples to the security staff as a token of their appreciation. They are currently planning their next trip to hike up Mount Waddick on October 16th. The dance club is going strong with 25 members, staying after school every Wednesday until 5:00 p.m. They are busy preparing for the pep rally and holiday show. Greater Lowell students will be volunteering to work at the Bay State Marathon on October 18th. The race is scheduled to kick off at 8:00 a.m. Students will be working a water station at the main entrance of the school. Our annual Canobie Lake Scream Fest trip will take place on October 16th. Students will have the chance to see a movie in the lecture hall after school, eat pizza, and head out to Canobie Lake at 5:00 p.m. Greater Lowell students will have the opportunity to participate in Be Bold, Be Bald National Fundraiser Event on October 16th. Participants go bald by boldly wearing a bald cap to honor those who bravely fight cancer, and they raise money to help fight back. Students will stay after on October 15th to paint a cap and wear their caps Friday, October 16th. The senior class is hosting a Dining for Dough fundraiser at Owen and Ollie's in Drakeet on Wednesday, October 21st. The homecoming dance will take place on October 23rd in the cafeteria from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. All grades are welcome to attend. Greater Lowell's Homecoming King and Queen will be announced at this year's homecoming football game on October 24th. The game is scheduled to start at 1:30 p.m. and the King and Queen will be announced at halftime. The Class of 2015 Yearbook Signing Event will take place on October 24th from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the cafeteria. Graduates are invited back to the school to pick up their yearbooks and enjoy music and lunch. All graduates will be able to use their yearbook as a ticket into the homecoming football game. On October 25th, students from Greater Lowell will be volunteering to host a water station for the AMSI Foundation's Halloween Fun Run. The 5K run will take place at the Lowell Elks and begins at 10:00 a.m. with an award ceremony and a party afterward. The National Technical Honor Society has elected their officers. Congratulations to President Kaylee Johnson, Vice President Emily Remigio, Secretary Leanna Danus, and Treasurer Kylie Gardner. DECA will be running their annual Senior Sweater Fundraiser in the mall. All proceeds will support DECA competitors. The freshman and sophomore class will hold their first annual freshman and sophomore community spaghetti dinner fundraiser event on Tuesday, November 10th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. All proceeds will go to fund their future after-school activities. Fall sports saw 457 student athletes try out for a team, up from 386 in the fall of 2014. Varsity football is off to their best start in over five years, coming in with a record of 3-2 on the season. They will travel to Lynn Tech for a Crucial CAC League game on October 17th. Varsity boys soccer is vying for an MIAA tournament berth, recently picking up a non-league win over New Mission High School on October 7th, as well as playing one-to-one draw with league rival Shawshing on October 9th. Girls soccer has played strong so far this season, recently picking up a big non-league win over Lawrence High School on October 6th. Varsity girls volleyball currently sits at 8-6 and are primed for an MIAA tourney qualification. The team will host their senior night events in the main gym on October 16th at 5:30 p.m. The cross-country teams have both been running strong this fall, all fall. The boys team is currently undefeated and are priming for the CAC League meet on October 31st at Greater Lawrence. The cheer team has been working hard to prepare for competition season this fall, while also providing support for the football team during game days. The CAC League competition is scheduled for a game to defend their championship from last season.
Thank you very much, great report. We appreciate it. It sure is a mouthful, isn't it?
A little bit.
Okay, moving on in the meeting, the approval of our school committee minutes from September 17, 2015. Motion by Mr. Morin, second by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Barhu?
Yes. Okay, approval of warrants of the amount of $6,960,847.25. Leave the reading by Mr. Morin, second by Mr. Tatsias.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Barhu?
Yes. Okay, motion to approve the expenditures by Mr. Morin, second by Mr. Espinola. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Morin? Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Barhu?
Yes. Okay, there is no report from our General Counsel this evening. Next, we'll have the report of our Superintendent Director.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure. The first item on my report is really an honor and a pleasure to introduce to you our Skills USA officers. They're going to give you a brief presentation. They were here for our Program Advisory Committee meeting. They performed this presentation for a couple hundred advisors the other night, and I asked them to come tonight as well. With your approval, they went to Louisville, Kentucky last summer to participate in the National Skills USA Leadership Conference. So, welcome.
Good evening. We would like to begin with some quick introductions. My name is Daniel Cornelier, and I'm a junior in the Visual and Design Department. This year, I will be serving as Vice President of the Greater Lowell Chapter of Skills USA.
My name is Maria Vicente, and I'm a senior in Painting and Design. This year, I'll be serving as Chapter Secretary-Treasurer.
My name is Julie Kilong, and I'm a senior in Medical Assisting. This year, I am serving as Chapter Parliamentarian.
My name is Dana Song, and I am also a senior in Medical Assistant. This year, I will be serving as your Chapter Reporter.
My name is Victoria Gibbs, and I'm a senior in Painting and Design. This year, I will be serving as your Chapter Historian.
My name is Lindsay Stasi, and I'm a junior in the Plumbing Field. This year, I will be serving as Chapter Ambassador.
And my name is Emily Dowd, and I am a senior in the Medical Assisting Program and President of Greater Lowell Skills USA Chapter. This past summer, a delegation of six students had the opportunity to attend the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference held in Louisville, Kentucky. Today, we'd like to share a bit of this experience with all of you. As we describe the conference, please enjoy the photos on the screen. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with Skills USA, it is a nonprofit student organization designed for students enrolled in trade, industrial, technical, and health occupations education. Formerly known as VICA, Skills USA has been preparing students for leadership in the world of work for over 50 years. It is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry, working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. The National Leadership and Skills Conference, held every June, is a showcase of the best of the best. The best leadership skills, the best technical skills, and the best in professional development. While Greater Lowell has had a long history of national medalists and technical competitors, this past year, our delegation attended the conference solely for professional development purposes as participants in Skills University.
Attending Skills University is a unique experience unlike any other in Skills USA. Unlike competition where the goal is to be the best, the ultimate goal in Skills University is to be better, think better, and know better. Since personal growth focuses on the individual, prior to attending the conference, we reviewed the seminar offerings, and each participant created their workshop schedule based on their own interests and aptitudes. Over the course of the week, our team completed over 60 hours of professional development in topics ranging from Skills USA curriculum and chapter activities to new industry trends and career paths. Some of the workshops we attended included Medical Careers in the Armed Forces, Engaging Girls in Skills Careers, Jump into STEM, Memory Power, and Student-to-Student Mentoring: Best Practices. While we each had a favorite, all of the workshops offered something new to consider that we could bring back to our Greater Lowell Chapter.
Skills University was only one part of our nationals' experience. The Kentucky Exposition Hall was also hosted to over 6,000 contestants in nearly 100 events, ranging from carpentry to cosmetology to community service and prepared speech. The event occupied a space equivalent to 16 football fields, and we had the opportunity to tour and observe every part of it. As we visited the contest areas, vendors and industry representatives, we also had the opportunity to meet new people from all over the United States and treat friends with them. For some of us, it was hard to break out of our comfort zone and approach strangers. But, as the week went on, it became easier, and we learned so much about how other states and other schools approach Skills USA in technical education. This experience gave us a whole new perspective as to what Skills USA is really all about. It's not about competition and having fun, although there's that too, but it's really about celebrating the talents and skills of hard-working individuals that have practiced countless hours prepping and fine-tuning their abilities. It's about taking the opportunity that career and technical education have to offer and running with it, so that we can be the generation that fills the skills gap and creates a better tomorrow for all of us.
Our experience at the National Leadership and Skills Conference has prepared us to come back to Greater Lowell and lead our peers with new skills and a renewed energy. It has equipped us with ideas to involve more students and to improve how we use Skills USA resources and programs so that Greater Lowell students have the best possible opportunities for success. We'd like to thank the school committee, as well as Superintendent Director Mr. Bourgeois and Assistant Superintendent Director-Principal Ms. Davis for allowing us to have this amazing opportunity. We'd also like to recognize the efforts of our Assistant Principal, Mr. Costa, Student Activities Coordinator, Mrs. Seer, and our Skills USA Advisors. It is because of all these people that we are starting this year truly prepared to be leaders and innovators for the Greater Lowell Skills USA Chapter. Thank you.
Those are the good things.
Good job. Nice to see that presentation.
I'd also like to thank their advisor who's here with them tonight. There's two other advisors who are not here, Tom Kizlowski and Guy Gendjemi. But Sharon Cornelius, the Senior Advisor for Skills USA. Sharon, thank you so much for all the hard work you do. Last year, we had 47 more participants in Skills USA here at Greater Lowell at the district competition than the year before. So, the year before, we had about 90. So, this organization is really off and running and growing and doing some fantastic things with our wonderful students. And we couldn't be more proud of you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the second item on my report, just to give you a quick update. We've only been in school for a month. So, I've gotten the first set of numbers from our co-op coordinator, and we've currently got 131 seniors already on co-op. That's an increase of 6%, 28% of the class. So, it's an increase of 6% over the percentage of the class where we were a year ago. And she had a whole bunch more going out the beginning of October. So, that number's climbing. So, our co-op program is getting stronger and expanding, and we're really happy about that. Also, just like to give you a quick update on a couple of recent events. Last year, we started an event called Back to School Night, where we have had parents come in and follow their child's schedule so that they get to know their teachers that their child has. We continued that. This was the second year that we did that. We had a really nice turnout. It's an effort to try and get parents and teachers connected early in the school year before any difficulties or problems arise, so that the parents kind of connect face with the teacher, and they get the contact information, and they know what the expectations are in the classes and the courses that they're taking. So, it's an effort to try and improve and increase parental involvement and parental participation in their child's education. So, that happened on September 24th, was very successful. And as I mentioned, our Skills folks, our Skills students, did a similar presentation to what you just saw at our Fall Program Advisory Committee meeting, which was very well-attended. It's showing some significant growth from last year. We had about 200 advisors. The mall area, we have a reception in the mall area before the event starts, and it was packed. We're probably going to have to move to the cafeteria for next fall. Well, the spring event that we have will be in the cafeteria, because we do a meal on that event. But, we had a very successful Fall Program Advisory Committee. A lot of the things that are indicators of successful Voc-Tech programs, co-op participation, Skills USA participation, participation by advisors from our business partners coming in, being engaged, those are all positive indicators of successful programs, and we're all trending in the right direction. Just an update on an event that's coming up. Superintendent Social will be on the 21st of October. I think that was a week from yesterday. So, that event's coming up. And also, I just want you to put on your calendar if you have time. We're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the CVS as the storefront that they're building, ribbon-cutting, and we've got some representatives coming from CVS as far away as their corporate headquarters in New Jersey. So, promises to be a pretty special event. This is, I think, the first time they've done something like this with a high school, and there's a lot of interest in it. And we're very grateful to Jonathan De Silva and the presentation that he did to you folks, and even more so with the follow-up of getting this implemented and getting it done. And also, this evening, Jill Davis is here, and she's going to give you an update on an initiative she's working on called Lead the Change.
I'd just like to share with you this evening the opportunity for Greater Lowell to continue its efforts to raise awareness in regard to the misuse and abuse of opioids and the opiate epidemic that is really impacting our community. We have the opportunity to have producer Jim Wahlberg, who is the Director of the Mark Wahlberg Youth Foundation, to come to our school and to present to our students his short film, If Only. That will be during the school day. Along with Jim Wahlberg, there will be a local family here at school to speak to how opioids have impacted their family directly. And that will be during the school day to the entire student population here at Greater Lowell on November 9th. During the morning, you all are invited on your chairs. I think you have an invitation to the event, as well as a flyer. That is the afternoon event. We will also be partnering within the community to an evening event, which will be held at Lowell High School, the Cyrus Irish Auditorium, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the evening, where other community members will join us in an effort to raise awareness with the entire community in regards to this really devastating epidemic which is impacting all of us around. So, I am happy to be part of this and want to invite you to be a part of it as well during the school day, as well as at the community event. I just wanted to acknowledge the community event that's going to be in the evening, some of the sponsors, specifically the Lowell Police Department and Chief Taylor, who has really stepped out and offered to assist me in any way he could in initiating this initiative to lead some change in this community and to bring awareness to the students and the parents and the families, and hopefully make some leeway with trying to stop this terrible epidemic. Any questions? Again, it's Monday, November 9th.
Okay, Mr. Booton?
I had a question as I was reading through. It said they're doing Narcan training. Do we have that here at our school with our nurses? Are they trained?
Since we have been connected to this initiative, they can get training that evening with this group of people. We were able to get people to volunteer to Narcan train, so we will include our nurses in that. If they can't attend in the evening, they'll also come to us. So, yes, we are going to be doing that.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Espinola?
So, at the Cyrus Irish Auditorium, they're going to be doing Narcan training?
So, at the Cyrus Irish Auditorium in the evening, there'll be several things going on. There'll be something called Hidden in Plain Sight, which is an organization that comes out and sets up an exhibit that is an exhibit of an addict's bedroom, so that parents can be aware of what they can look for in their child's bedroom if they could be using and addicted to drugs. In Plain Sight will be there. There'll also be several community resources there, setting up tables, sharing their resources.
This is more of a parent-oriented thing, not children, right?
Actually, it's both. It's students and parents and community members, yes.
So, there'll be Narcan training while the kids are present there?
The Narcan training is only for those who are interested, only for those who are interested, yes.
Okay, I'm sure Chief Taylor will take care of that. It just seems odd to have the Narcan training with the kids present. It's not a pleasant training, it's not.
It's not going to be, it's not in the public forum. Narcan training would be a separate area for the Narcan training for those that are interested. The public forum will be the resource tables that are set up, as well as going into the auditorium to view Jim Wahlberg's film, If Only, and a panel discussion with several local officials who are listed below to speak. State Representative Mr. Tom Golden, DPH Commissioner Monica Barrow has been invited. She has not responded yet to whether she is coming. Lowell Police Deputy Superintendent Deborah Friedel, Mayor of Lowell Rodney Elliott, and Keith King of Our Place Recovery will be on the panel speaking.
Yeah, I'm...
So, that will be the main...
It sounds like it's a really good thing.
Yeah, that will be the main presentation along with the exhibit. However, the Narcan will be for those that are interested.
Okay. I'm glad you said that. It was kind of odd for me to, like, because you would like to have your children present for most of these presentations.
It's encouraged that, we're going to have a presentation here at school, the same presentation of the film, and we encourage that parents also come in in the evening to share and see the film with their children.
Are we training people for Narcan at our school?
We are nurses, yes.
No, at this seminar, at this...
During the school day, there's no Narcan training.
What you're talking about...
In the evening, whoever is interested in being part of the Narcan training can be part of the Narcan...
The evenings at the Cyrus Irish?
Yes.
Right, not at our school?
Not at our school, though. And we are part of that as community partners with these individuals in our community to try to raise awareness. I am working with the sponsors below. As you can see, Our Place, Greater Lowell, Zax Team, Millennium Health, Circle Health, so that we can hold this event.
I think it's fantastic. I'm just stuck on the Narcan thing. I don't want to be teaching Narcan to the kids here, or do I want to be having us teach them at the Cyrus Auditorium? And I'm sure the chief knows all about that.
Yes, we are not teaching Narcan to our students here.
Okay, and I just have one comment. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for working so hard on this thing. I know that you and I have had many discussions over the past number of years, and you have had ongoing speakers here. You have always worked on making our students aware about this epidemic and about how much you can grab on to them and grab on to their families. And it's something that you spearhead every year, and you're even bringing it to another level by bringing it into Lowell High School Auditorium. And it's something that should be commended. So, I thank you for your hard work. You know, we look forward to being there. I look forward to being there. I'm sure a lot of the school committee members will either be talking it up within the community or even be in attendance. And this is something that is very passionate for so many people, and let's hope that we can get many people to attend.
I just want to add that we will be sending information to sending town schools, as well as sending town police departments. I will be sending invitations to the local, to our district police departments, as well as the sending town schools, as well as other organizations in the Greater Lowell community, so that they will attend.
Good job, not enough can be done.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Great work, thank you.
Thank you. And there's posters here for you guys to take home with you and post around.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
One more question? Okay, thank you.
Is that it? You're all good?
Thank you, Jill. Okay, the next item on my report is a report on Saturday, the possibility of having Saturday detentions, which was a motion from a while back. I apologize for taking so long to get back to Mr. Booton on this motion. However, what did transpire in the meantime since the motion was made was that the state enacted a law, Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012, which complicated the whole situation with regards to being able to take students away from class to punish them or to serve consequences and deny them access to an education during that time. So, we've been dealing, Mr. Costa's here, Ms. Davis is here. So, we've been dealing with how to kind of sort that out and get that implemented so that we're in compliance with the law. And now, we're ready to provide that report. You have it in your packets under the superintendent's report, listing all the different types of things we do and how we do them and why we do them at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to put it on the next agenda, because I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Okay.
You know, I've just seen it now. Like, we can have the presentation, but if there's going to be a vote or whatever? No vote, okay?
Yeah, there's no vote. It was just to give a report.
Informative. Okay. All business, that's all.
All right, that's all. All right, that's fine.
So we weren't really planning to make a presentation. You were provided with the update, and we were here to answer any questions in regards to the update that you had. In regards to Saturday detention, if you can, we can speak to it. I can speak off.
You didn't?
No. Mr. Booton?
No, I got a copy of this and I've read it. I feel bad that my colleague hasn't, and maybe...
Well, don't let me hold you up.
No, I mean, I found it to be very thorough. I thought it may be a possibility to help. One of the most important parts that, I'm not sure who put it in, both of you, but discipline needs to be done right away and not set out a week. You know, if something happens on a Monday, you don't want them making it up on Saturday. It needs to be immediate, especially with in-school suspensions. It's something I will keep on my radar to see if there's ever a change, see if it's ever a benefit to have it on a Saturday if it is a deterrent. But with the transportation issues that we have with four different communities, having busing on Saturday would also probably be cost prohibitive, so.
So I think, Mr. Booton, I agree. I think it's a good idea to keep on your radar, but I do want to add that it's something that's always on our radar, because we're always looking to improve the climate and the behaviors of students in our school, specifically because we're preparing them for college and career in the future, and we want them to have good habits and good behaviors. One of the things that we have discussed prior to maybe thinking about a Saturday detention is moving to a Friday afternoon detention, which would be from two to five prior to a Saturday, to avoid that stress. It would put on families to get their students here on Saturday because of our location, that before we would move to a Saturday detention, we would perhaps be moving to a Friday afternoon where we have transportation here with a late bus that can take students home.
The detention part was good. The other part of the motion was that to have kids that were getting suspended and not being in the classroom, because those are typically the kids that need the classwork to stay in. And if they're out of the classroom too much, they're gonna be a habit, they're gonna fall behind. And any student that falls behind, even the best student, if they're out sick for four or five days, is gonna struggle to come back. If you have a student that's struggling and out, so if there's a way to keep them in class, and your statistics that you had showed that there's less incidence of kids being suspended, I don't know what you're doing to make them behave better, but keep up the good work.
Well, I think there's the new discipline law, which is the Chapter 222, which really a law that was developed so that students would stay in school and access the curriculum. So I think due to that law and our efforts, again, to keep students in school, we decided to relook at some of our consequences and some of the things that we do for our in-house, our detentions and in-house suspensions, to avoid them from earning those infractions and keeping from accessing the curriculum. So, and they're listed in there, some of the changes that we made.
So the kids not behaving better, or is it just we're not suspending them out of school as often?
Well, I think, I think it's a twofold combination of things. We're working with things to sort of change their behavior, so of the, I wouldn't say consequences, but I would say the positive intervention and supports that we're providing to them instead of consequences to work on changing their behavior is working.
Would you ever consider if you do the Friday afternoons, if it wasn't in-school suspension and it wasn't a serious offense, having those done over two Friday afternoons? So if a student was gonna be in in-school suspension for a day, keep them in the classroom and then one Friday they do three hours and the second Friday they do the other three hours?
I would say yes, depending on the severity of the infraction for the in-school.
I understand sometimes you have to remove the child from their classroom.
Because sometimes you have to immediately remove them from the situation, but I would say yes. That's what we would use, we would use that for as well.
Could you ask the students how they'd feel about a Friday afternoon detention?
I haven't yet, but I'm gonna bet on it.
We actually want to ask somebody, feel about it?
I think Friday afternoon...
Friday versus the other days that are only an hour. I mean, three hours on a Friday afternoon is eternity.
It's as bad as Saturday.
Right. And to me, for me and the location of the school and the stress that it would put on families and the obligations that some students have to work on the weekends and other family obligations, I think that Friday afternoon with the transportation would have an impact. But I don't think we're at that point right now because of our decrease in our in-house suspensions rates, as well as our outhouse. I don't think, out-of-house, I always say outhouse, our out-of-house suspensions. There's no need to move in that direction yet, but it's always on the back burner, and that would be our next step.
Okay, Mr. O'Hare?
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, talking about suspension going after school, I find a lot of kids are up in that library after school, some doing their homework, some socializing, but some just having, you know, a good time, just, but they, what a great scene that is. We're talking about all the good things that the kids are doing. They're up there helping each other, enjoying the books, just having a good time.
So the library is open after school, as well as before school in the morning for students to come to and to read books, to do homework. There's tables set up, floor table, games like chess and checkers and things like that. Yes, we still have checkers.
Yeah, I was impressed by the number of students that were up there.
And students do utilize our library. We have one of the best libraries in the state, yeah.
Do you and Mr. Costa go up there and play checkers with the students?
Not recently, not recently.
There's one other initiative that's going on that's connected to this, and that's Mr. Costa's leading focus group to look at behavior and how to, consequences work for the majority of our kids, but we have a cohort of kids that are chronically in trouble, and the consequence doesn't mean anything to them. So if they're gonna be successful after they leave here, then we have to find a way to change their behavior, and the consequence model isn't doing it. So you want to talk a little bit, Jamie, about...
It's a positive intervention and support, and I'll shut up now.
What you're working on? Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. So we have what we've basically called the Behavior Committee to look at a lot of different things, just looking at some of the data that we have in regards to student discipline, infractions, things of that nature, and maybe what we might be able to do, just kind of analyzing a little bit more what we might be able to do as a group to improve it. It's put out there to, for people to sign up, pretty much of who wanted to be part of it. I think last year we had about twelve total members, including Ms. Davis, and, you know, just did a good job so far analyzing the data, looking at things, having some discussions about what things might we be able to do to try to work on changing some of those behaviors, especially for some of those difficult students that seem to engage in some of the problematic behavior on a more regular basis. What do we do for that? And also extending the conversation a little bit to start looking at maybe some core values for the school and what that may look like if we wanted to go in that direction. Instead of continuing to add pages to the student handbook as far as what students shouldn't do, maybe try to keep it simple and talk about some core values that we can continue to reiterate to kids that really covers all the different behaviors, so that when we're talking to them, you know, things like integrity, honesty, respect, things of that nature, if we kind of came up with some core values and how do we get the, get all the staff involved in that and get their feedback on it, but come up with maybe some core values. I think we're thinking of that as a goal for this year, so that when we're speaking to kids, whether it be in a larger group, like in the lecture hall when we're having class meetings, or whether it be individually, myself, Mr. Fallon, Mrs. Ambino in the office, our guidance counselors, just talking about certain behaviors and how they fall under the, you know, kind of referring back to the core values when we address certain behaviors that they may be engaging in. So that's kind of something we're focusing on this year.
Thanks, Mr. Costa. I think Mr. Moran might have a question.
Hi, Mr. Davis. You know, instead of some of that, either Saturday suspension or Friday, or, you know, perhaps we could take privileges away from the students, maybe in some individual circumstances where perhaps this student plays sports, or, you know, so that that would be their suspension, part of their suspension process. I know as a former educator, I used to go to the coaches and say, the student's not doing well, you know, because it's a privilege to do those things. So is that something you may consider?
Yes, well, first, we try and thinking of it in a more positive way. I'll give you an example today. I had the football coach down today to have a conversation with him about a student that I was speaking to. There were actually two different students that I needed to have him involved with. Always try to get the coaches involved if we know that students are involved in sports, because we look at that as, the coach is somebody who has, typically has a very strong rapport with a student. And if we don't, or if we do, and we can get somebody else on board that has a good rapport with the student, their message is going to go a long way with the student. So we always try to get them involved before it gets to something bigger, where they might get into trouble, where they have to be prevented from participating in a sport. But if they do get suspended in school or out of school during the length of the suspension, they are unable to attend any type of student activities or athletic events, sports, and so forth. So that's contingent upon us, making sure that we communicate that information to the coach. Sometimes, unfortunately, we have to have conversations with the athletic director or the coaches that a particular student that's playing a sport is suspended at that time and wouldn't be able to participate in practice, or maybe a game if that's taken place.
I mean, I realize that not all circumstances of all students, you know, are gonna be involved in sports, who may get suspension. I'm just saying, an alternative to the suspension. Taking something away, some privilege away, something that, you know, that may get around that, you know, I mean, I understand some circumstances where they have to be suspended or perhaps suspension from the building, you know.
Yeah, we, the concern that we do run into a little bit, we just, we do want to be consistent, too. So that would be the only concern that I may have if a student...
Well, I would be talking about consistency, you know what? I wouldn't just give you the privilege and not give it to Ms. Davis, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if we didn't suspend a student, if they, you know, for a kid that's playing football, and then a kid that's not involved, that would be the only worry about how to handle that. But I understand certainly what you're saying as far as, it's, sports is, and activities, we want them involved, and that's also, we look at as leverage for us. That's something that they're attached to, and hopefully it's leverage, and that's certainly why we do whatever we can to communicate with those coaches and to make them aware. We kind of hold our students that are involved in those things to a little bit, you know, we try to tell them that they're held to a little bit of a higher standard when they're involved in those things.
So right now, it's in addition to, not in place of. So right now, if they're suspended, they also cannot participate in sports.
I understood that, anyways, as a former educator here in the building.
That we worked very close.
That I used to stay late, and I'd say, oh, look who was at practice today but wasn't in school today. You know what I mean? So I would go to the, I would go to discipline the next morning or something, say, you know...
Excuse absence for medical...
Well, that's a different, that's something different from, that's something different, though, from discipline.
Yeah, discipline. I just have a question. Is this a problem, discipline in detention? Is it a big problem in the school?
No, it is not.
Yeah, right next. Okay. Thank you. Mr. O'Hare?
Not at this time.
If you're out for the day, you can't play the next day, okay? You can't practice. Listen, just let me say one thing. We're talking about kids and everything, what you can do. One thing, I appreciate everything that was said here today, especially the USA, Skills USA people, but get out to the games. We should be getting out to the games. I go to them. You have some great teams going, taking place right now. Kids love to see you out there, so even if it's a half a game or a quarter a game, just step in. The teams in the school are doing great, and the teams out of the school are doing great also. As a matter of fact, there's almost a quarter-page story on one of the students from Greater Lowell today in the newspaper. So just give them, you don't have to stay for the whole game, but just get out there sometime.
Thank you for that, Mr. O'Hare. Okay? Moving along, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on my report is a request for out-of-state travel. It's a request that we get every year for our cosmetology students to attend a cosmetology show in New York City. So they leave here early in the morning, they take a bus out to New York City, they attend. It's a very well-attended, it's a very highly-regarded show in the industry. Our teachers chaperone, they go out and they're back here late that evening to head home. So because it's out of New England, it requires school committee approval for them to go, so.
Motion by Mr. Espinola to approve, seconded by Mr. Tatsias. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahul?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, looks like we're going to have a report, or should I say a final report, of our current business manager, Mr. George Garabia.
Good evening. One of the items I have on before you tonight, I hope you had a chance to read it, has to do with the OPEB trust that we're trying to establish. We've talked about it in previous committee meetings, and so before you tonight, the first item is a needed vote by the school committee to accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20. I had attached a copy of the law in the packet for you with the suggested motion.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20. Would anybody like to read that motion? So, okay. Whereas the district is desirous of establishing an Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, also known as OPEB, and therefore do hereby vote to accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20. Motion by Mr. Booton, seconded by Mr. O'Hare. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Present.
Mr. Bahul?
Yes.
Thank you. The second item I had also in the packet was a copy of the Declaration of Trust Agreement. This had been an agreement that was similar to other districts and school and municipalities that I also had Attorney Long review, and basically I wanted to have the committee vote to establish, you know, to adopt the agreement. And if I can elaborate a little further, too, part of the, in the agreement, it requires that the trust is made up of five trustees, which will consist of the school business administrator, the district treasurer, this is on page four of the agreement. So it's the business administrator, the district treasurer, one member of the school committee, and two other individuals appointed by the school committee. And the superintendent will serve as a ex officio member of the trust, a board of trustees. So, you know, I'm not sure if you're ready to act on any kind of an appointment, but somebody would have to be selected or appointed from the board to be on this trust. And the additional two individuals, whether they be members of the school committee or outside members, that's a decision before the board.
And we need a motion to adopt the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical School District Trust Agreement as presented.
Question?
Go ahead, Mr. Booton.
We have to have a motion first. Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. O'Hare, seconded by Mr. Tatsias. Question?
You have to have a motion before you talk about it.
If you have a motion before the discussion...
First and second before you can discuss it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hare. Question by Mr. Booton?
If we adopt this tonight...
Um, if we adopt this tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to establish who the trustees are tonight?
I, I don't believe so. I think if we adopt the agreement, the trustees will meet once they're appointed and execute the agreement.
So it doesn't have to be done tonight?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Where is this? Page four?
It's under the green tab. The green tab.
There you go.
Go back, Joe.
Excuse me.
Yes.
How does this differ from other trusts that are established for this purpose in other school districts? Are they pretty much all the same?
Yeah, I get, we got these from, I got copies from other school districts and they, they were all like kinda boilerplate and other than changing the district's name.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Uh, roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran? Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
I'm gonna trust my counterparts on this. I'm gonna vote President again because I didn't get a chance to read it, but everybody's voting yes, so I don't wanna, uh, hold anything up, so.
Yes.
I didn't read a lot of it either.
I'll sit with that. And my last item I have is, um, the Assistant Treasurer position. Um, as I indicated last meeting, my confidential administrative assistant, Karen Wedick, is retiring in January. And in addition to her position, she is the district's Assistant Treasurer and with, with a stipend of the $2,500. With her leaving the beginning of January, I'm, I'm recommending or requesting to appoint Suzanne Reese, who is the, uh, to the Assistant Treasurer position upon Karen's retirement. The reason I, she's, she's the most confidential, uh, the most senior confidential secretary. She's been in the bill, in the school for thirty-f, almost thirty-five years. Uh, she's my payroll administrator, qualified, trustworthy, dedicated. I know you, you all know her. And the reason I, it, it's important, I think that we try to get this taken care of is because there's a lot of banking paperwork that has to get done prior to the departure. There's also a signature, um, signatures required that I have to get to our software company to, to be, you know, redone and, and the software loaded back into our system for the payroll checks and accounts payable checks. Um, and for those reasons, I wanted a smooth transition, especially for, for Billy Joe and that's why I'm suggesting.
Mr. Garabedian?
Yes, sir.
Enough said.
Okay. Zip it.
I'd like to, uh, make the motion to appoint Suzanne Reese as Assistant District Treasurer with a stipend of $2,500, effective one three sixteen.
Okay, second by Mr. O'Hare.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, and I gotta say, it's my last, my last gig. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with all of you over the years, it's been almost twelve years. The board has, uh, always been cooperative, supportive, professional. Uh, I consider all of you as my friends and, uh, I just can't tell you how great it was working here. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
On behalf of the students and the staff and the administration here at Great Lowell Technical High School, I'd just like to thank you for your commitment and your many years of service to, to the school community. Without a balanced budget, we wouldn't have the resources that we have to service our students. So your hard work is greatly appreciated and I wanna wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
I get to do this, you know, Saturday night. Thank you. Get that out of the way. I'm a hug, I'll come around. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. I don't know what I would've done without you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for making us look good. You're the man.
Good luck to everyone, guys. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Not many get to that, though.
One more day, yeah?
Friday, that's right. Friday's his last day.
Yeah.
Two weeks vacation after that.
Oh, yeah, I have downstairs.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, um, next item is old business. Uh, we have a couple of outstanding items from previous meetings. Uh, the first one, I think we discussed this evening about the possibility of Saturday detentions and that was brought up from Mr. Booton. Um, I think maybe we could consider removing that from our items.
Yeah, we can, uh, I, we could take number three off.
Okay, and, uh, there's another one that I have a question about, which would be the one-man, one-vote. I know this committee has, um, exhausted their efforts and worked very hard with the, um, courts, with our lawyers, with our sending municipalities, our districts. And I think that we've done all of our due diligence to go ahead and satisfy all of our work. We have given them the opportunity to change our, um, charter to become, um, voted by the whole district rather than just by our ascending communities. Therefore, um, it would be a consideration of mine to remove the one-man, one-vote requirement. Mr. Booton?
I think we have done everything we can except for the fact that the city and two of the towns haven't voted on this yet. So if there is a change, um, should it be on the agenda in case we need to act on it?
It's not necessary. I think we've exhausted all of our efforts and we've put it on, on them and they've actually put it on us originally, if you recall. And, um, what became of it is we have gone to court, we have established a decree with them and now it's up to them if they want to go ahead and implement it. We have exhausted all of our efforts on this and it does not seem like it needs to be on, uh, the outstanding list.
I would recommend leaving it on until they follow through on the decree, even though the decree was ordered, they haven't followed through and voted this in. So I don't know if there's going to be a change at any of the towns or the city. And it may come back to us at some point.
And, well, the question is, uh, will they, um, do they have to vote on the decree? Will they vote on the decree? We don't necessarily know that they will be doing any of that.
The decree does not have to be voted on. It does have to be. It's part of the decree.
Okay, uh, Mr. O'Hare?
Just, uh, I mean, there's a thousand questions that could be asked, even it could, well, probably won't affect this election, but, uh, you know, no idea what the ballot is gonna look like, um, in, in terms of position, et cetera. Uh, there's still a lot of questions to be asked, uh, that I would think. I don't know what the answer is going to be. Are we gonna get ready for another election, another year? I don't know.
Okay, so.
But.
I don't think it hurts to leave it on.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so we'll remove item three and we'll keep items one, two, and four there.
No, I just wanna, do, have you seen a final decree yet? Yes. How come we haven't seen it? It got emailed to everybody.
Yeah, that was a while ago, though.
Why haven't seen it?
It was a while ago.
Yeah. There's a, there's a lot of reading to it, but it really comes down to.
You read the first page and then you go, "Ah, this is boring."
The decree that I thought, what I saw, did not say when the elections were gonna be, did not say. That's true. Um, so, um, how is that the final decree? I, I don't think that it's the final decree. Another reason why I think it should stay on here.
I'll make a motion, we take it off.
Bring it up. No, we need to keep it on.
I make a motion, we take it off. You second? Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Who's running the show here? Are you the, are you the chairman?
Yes.
I made a motion. Okay, well, no, no, you gotta listen to him.
Right, at this time.
I think, uh.
He said, "Can I take a motion?"
I think Tommy was right.
At this time, at this time, it seems that, you know, this is, this can stay on, it's not doing any harm and we can just move on. And we have three outstanding items.
I don't like it.
Much better. It, it sits there. It just sits there. We don't have to like things, but, you know, it just sits there.
I don't like it from the beginning.
Now, who's Tommy?
Well, not at this time, so let's move on to new business. Um, we're gonna have a nomination of our delegate for the MASC, MAS joint conference to represent this school district. Um, nominations are open.
I nominate Ray Booton.
Nominated by Ray Booton.
Second. Excuse me, this takes place on August fourteenth. My twin's birthday is on the fourteenth. I will not be attending. November. Uh, it says August fourteenth.
Where does it say that?
No. Under new business?
November, no, probably November six or seven. That would be at the, um, state, state conference.
New business, nominations will take, take place August fourteenth. I think that should be November. At the August fourteenth meeting.
That's an error.
When is the meeting?
It's in November.
At the conference being held in November.
I will be in Florida, so.
In November again? I'm gonna even sign up, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the.
People going to the conference are Mr. O'Hare, Mr. Gigi, Mr. Bahu and Mr. Moran. Cause you didn't sign.
Mr. Espinola.
That was one of the first ones to sign.
Alright, so those, those, that's who's going.
And I believe Mr. Tatzias might be there as well. Um, nomination, um.
He hasn't, um.
Mr. O'Hare, would you like to nominate someone?
Nominate, uh, Mr. Gigi. I'm gonna be there.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Gigi. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, okay, and if we could also nominate an al.
I guess so.
We could also nominate an alternate just in case Mr. Gigi may not be able to attend. Um, nominations are open.
I'll nominate Mr. Tatzias.
Mr. Booton, who will not be attended, attending, would like to nominate somebody.
I was gonna nominate Mr. O'Hare, but I'd be glad to nominate Mr. Tatzias. Second, Mr. O'Hare. Uh, Mr. O'Hare then. Just wanna pay back the favor.
Seconded by Mr. Tatzias. Okay, roll call, please.
I'm experienced with that.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
I'd pay.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Bahu?
Yes. Okay, uh, there are no committee person, committeeman motions tonight. And then if we could approve, um, some subcommittees, the first one of our September seventeen, two thousand and fifteen Great Lowell Technical High School Building Committee. Motion by Mr. Moran, second by Mr. Booton. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, okay, and we have monthly approvals for, uh, from our October fifteen, two thousand and fifteen meeting. Um, change order number twelve of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and forty-four cents for our building project. Motion by Mr. Moran to accept, seconded by Mr. Tatzias. Roll call.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Tatzias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, and I'd like to, uh, entertain a, a motion to adjourn by any one of our members. Uh, Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Gigi.
Can I second that?
Roll call.
Yes, you can.
Third by Mr. Espinola.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Moran?
I'm just listening to one of your teammates, that's all.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes, you can tell him that the next time.
Yes.
Okay.